It's on.
It's on.
On recording has started.
So we're, we're good?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I had to call this meeting to order at seven oh four P M. Adequate notice of meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. By advertising the annual meeting notice in the official newspapers, providing a copy of the agenda to the newspapers and posting a copy of the agenda for a hall. Would you please rise for the vice president? Sam, would you please call the wall?
Here. Councilmember Docherty.
Here.
Council President Lee Teague.
Here.
Councilmember O'Brien. Councilmember Upday.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Okay, our first item of business this evening is a public hearing on ordinance number nine thirty-five. This is an ordinance amending the retail food establishment licensing fee to add a new section. Two dash thirty-one point eight B point three to include an annual fee for food trucks. Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance number nine thirty-five?
Same.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Closed, abstentions, the eyes have it. The public hearing is now open. If anyone would like to address the governing body regarding ordinance number nine thirty-five, please just state your name for the record.
Uh, Morgan Taylor. I'm going to be at B P A. I'm just curious about this. So it does that essentially mean that anyone who wishes to host a food truck would need to get an annual permit to have? To make that allowable?
So currently the borough only has a temporary. So every time that a, a food truck wants to operate here, they have to pay a ninety dollar fee. So, yeah. So part of it's a health inspection fee. Part of it's a markup for the borough. This will create, if somebody's going to operate in the borough more than one time a year, it's more costed. Advantage to them to pay. I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars. Be one hundred and fifty dollars and then they can operate here multiple times throughout the year. We didn't have one. A lot of towns do have an annual, but Frenchtown didn't. And since food trucks kind of are around town, we're trying to be a little more conducive to that.
Okay.
Type of way of dealing food. Yep. Any additional questions or comments? Okay. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Same.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Bye.
Closed, extensions? The public hearing is now closed. Um, we will move into our presentation from our borough planner, Darlene Green from Colliers Engineering. She's going to be presenting this evening on the housing element and fair share plan. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to Darlene. If you're ready for us.
Well, the internet is not ready. That's okay. We're going to be good work. It's just a little slow on the topic. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hello. So tonight I am here to present the housing plan. Um, but before I do that, I think it's important, especially for members of the public to have a little bit of background about why we're doing this and um, the reasoning behind it. Um, I'll get my notes open. So. The state of Jersey is unique compared to a lot of other states in the country in that we have a constitutional obligation to provide. A realistic opportunity for affordable housing, each and every municipality. Simply point, that doesn't mean that we have to build the housing we Frenchtown. It means that we got to put the zoning in place to enable a developer to build housing. And that was put in place in nineteen seventy-five. Via the Supreme Board. Following that decision, there were a host of lawsuits because unfortunately the decision didn't tell towns how to go about building. And so there was a lot of litigation and it wasn't until nineteen eighty-five when legislature created the Fair Housing Act to bring some order to the chaos. The Fair Housing Act created the Council on Affordable Housing, which I'm sure many of you have heard over the years referred to as COA. COA was the administrative entity to um, create rules, promulgate the obligations and essentially certify towns if they followed the process. And gave them what was uh, called substantive certification. And so with the rules in place, the rounds of affordable housing commenced starting in nineteen eighty-seven. That was the first round. It ran for six years until nineteen ninety-three. Then there was a second round. So in each round, COA would issue the obligations, towns would prepare a housing plan. And then you implement the housing plan. What they realized were, was that six years wasn't enough to issue obligations, write housing plans and actually build the housing. So in nineteen ninety-nine, the beginning of the third round, they said, we're going to change it. We're going to make them ten-year periods. And at the same time, COA thought, you know what? We're also going to do some tweaks to our substantive and our procedural rules. Which was not a good idea because every rule set that they promulgated was challenged. And ultimately in twenty fifteen, the Supreme Court stripped COA of their power to review plans. And sent towns back to court. So they rewound the plot. And what ultimately happened is the, the third round, which is supposed to be ten years, stretched out to twenty-six. Which was problematic for a host of reasons. So when the twenty fifteen decision was issued, towns were given a choice. And they, they kept, the court kept the same idea that COA was a carrot and a stick approach. The carrot has always been. Voluntarily comply and we will give you immunity from what is known as builder running lawsuits. If you choose not to voluntarily comply, the stick is the builder running lawsuit. Which is where either a property owner or a contract purchaser. Comes to the county level housing judge and says, I either own this property or I'm under contract to purchase this property. And since town X hasn't met their constitutional obligation, I, nice developer, will help them do that. And the builder's remedy erases your zoning, it erases your master plan, your planning board has no say in the development. It is blind to your town's development density, the character, what's next door, whether or not you have a pass me water sewer school wise. And the court awards the remedy. So that's the stick. Um, and that process is carried through today. And so towns in twenty fifteen were given a deadline to file declaratory judgment action. Frenchtown filed that, they went through the court process, you ended up with the judgment of repossession compliance. Everything was fine. Then we fast forward to last year. Last year, the legislature adopted um, substantial amendments to the Fair Housing Act. They officially removed COA from their powers and said, we're going to continue this compliance process in the courts, which has made it difficult. And they changed the process, they changed the regulations, they changed the bonuses, and the most important part is they set forth very aggressive timelines. You may remember back in January, you adopted a resolution committing to your obligations. That was the first major municipal deadline. The second one is at the end of this month on June thirtieth. By that date, we have to submit and adopt a housing element and fair share plan. Every town does. And if the town does not do it by that date, you automatically lose immunity the very next day. And so last week, I presented the housing plans to the planning board. The planning board adopted that document. Typically, I would not be before the council for a master plan document, but a housing plan is the unicorn of master plan documents. It is the only document that requires the governing body's endorsement because it contemplates expenditures. The planning board cannot authorize expenditures only this body. And so that's why it has to come to you for endorsement. Um, so it's, it's unique compared to all the other master plan documents. So that's a background of, you know, affordable housing in two minutes, which is much more convoluted than that, but it's a high altitude summary. So with that, I will dive into the housing plan and try to give you a, a brief overview. So this document at the beginning. Uh, covers the obligations. And so it's a four-part obligation that every town except for urban aid communities has in the state. First is your rehab obligation. That gets reset every um, round. So like round, whether you do well or you don't do anything, you get a new obligation. And so our rehab obligation for this round is eleven. And that is where we have to operate existing homes in town that have some deficient major system. Think um, roof, plumbing, electrical, HVAC, septic, well, something like that. So that's your first obligation. Your second one has already been set for some time. That's your prior round obligation. So what they did was they actually merged the first and the second round together. For purposes of obligations and your prior round obligations too, very much. Your third round obligation is fifty-two by large. Your fourth round obligation, which we were just provided last November, and that's what you submitted your resolution on in January, is twenty-two. So all of those obligations added up. We have to either address or satisfy. So the report. Contains all the mandatory components under the statute. What is um, worthy of noting is while we are issued all these obligations, the rules recognize that towns have. There's finite resources. Towns could have a lack of available sewer, towns could have a lack of public water, or towns could have a lack of vacant and developable land. You fall into the last category. Our office last year undertook a vacant land analysis to see if we could get an adjustment of your fourth round number. And that uh, ju- of analysis looks at first plan juice. We have to evaluate every class one vacant property. Every class three farmland assessed property and every fifteen C publicly owned vacant property. Um, now the caveat with that is, for example, the borough owns parks. Technically they are vacant, but they're all on your rosy. We can't develop that. So we have to sift through all those properties. Once we know that, then on top of that, we layer the environmental constraints. Streams, flood hazard area, wetlands, the buffers associated with all of those features. And we start to see where are there vacant lots that are over point six two five acres, because the assumed density is eight units to the acre. That are, that point six two five acres are more of vacant and developable land. What we found is there are sites that are greater than that in town, but they're beyond where you have your existing utilities. So you can't build multifamily housing unless you've got public sewer and public water. So going through this analysis, what we've realized is that there is not a property in Frenchtown that meets the size requirements. Free of environmental constraints and next to water and sewer infrastructure. So that means your fourth round obligation is adjusted down to zero. That number we have to satisfy. That's really easy. The difference between your realistic development potential of zero and your obligation is called unmet need. That we only have to address. I know the word sounds similar, but in the world of affordable housing, they are dramatically different. So just keep that in the back of your mind. The, the document contains a lot of demographic data. That data, while interesting, has no bearing on our numbers. It has no bearing on our mechanisms or how we meet our obligation. It's just required data that I asked from this plan. The most important part of the document is the section that talks about mechanisms. Uh, on page thirty-eight. And so this is where we say, what do we have today on the ground that we can count as credit worthy and apply against all these obligations? And then also what are we going to do moving forward to either satisfy or address the outstanding obligations? So the good news is you've got three sites that are credit worthy today. First, you've got DeSaffio Apartments up at the northern end of town. Up there, there are three affordable housing units. We get three credits for those units. Then we have the units that were built at Harrison Square on the old ceramics plan. That property has seventeen units. And because of when it was built and what ground it's allocated to, we also get ten bonus credits. Think of them as like free credits. They're wonderful. Um, so that's like generous, a total of twenty-seven credits. That's huge for the borough. And then last but not least, we have the development that happened at Aiden Milford. There we have one credit for the one affordable unit that exists. So in total tonight, as we sit here, we have twenty-one credits, ten bonuses for a total of thirty-one credits that can be applied to our various rounds. Looking ahead, how we can fill up all the other buckets of obligations. So first is rehab. Rehab, we're doing three different mechanisms. Uh, rehab is notoriously expensive and you have a finite affordable housing trust fund. So I have to admit, this was really pushing my uh, math skills. Of how do I stretch a dollar? It's like my house budget. How do I stretch that dollar really far? Uh, and so what we're doing is first, we're going to do a borough sponsored rehab program. That's a typical mechanism to address a rehab obligation. This is where we'll take the trust fund money. We, uh, it can be any unit in town. It doesn't have to be a deed restricted affordable unit. The homeowners or the household has to meet the income guidelines, which I think Sam put it out here. Thank you very much, Sam.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and those are the brand new guidelines released just a couple of weeks ago. Um, they would have to meet the income guidelines and they'd have to meet one or more major systems um, fits. If they wanted their house painted, that doesn't count. It has to be a major system. At the end of the rehab process, where you, we are required to either place a lien or a mortgage on the home for ten years.
Yeah.
That is so that someone does get crafty and think they're going to use our trust fund to increase the value of their house and sell it as soon as we fix their home.
Hmm.
And people do try to do that. I had that issue in another hundred and county town, but because we put all the right mechanisms in place, they did not get away with that. So that program, we're earmarking three units to go to the program. So thirty thousand dollars of our trust fund will be set aside for that. The second program is the county actually has a home improvement program. This did not exist when we were writing our third round housing plan. So this is actually wonderful because this program costs you nothing. All we have to do is advertise the program. So whether you do it through a newsletter on the website, um, you know, telling your civic groups, spreading the word. And hopefully we can get four homeowners to go through that program. It's similar in that um. It has to be a major system. They have to be income qualified and there's some sort of restriction that's put on at the end for the ten years. The last program, which I find most exciting, and I have to admit, checks a lot of boxes that the planning board has been talking about over the past few years, is called Echo Housing. Elder cottage housing opportunities. And under the rules, it's defined as a modular self-contained unit erected on a site containing an existing dwelling unit. And the unit is restricted to individuals who are fifty-five years or older or are um, disabled. So think of it as a tiny home in your backyard. The, the rules that regulate this though are very old, the, the prior round rules, and they actually require. The borough to own what are called the tiny homes and move them around every ten years. Now I think that's a poor idea because as I said. These folks could be fifty-five years or older. So if you move your elderly in-laws in who are in their sixties, in ten years, they're going to be evicted when they're seventy. It's short sighted planning. And so instead, what we're proposing is we're not, Frenchtown is not landlords. We're not picking up houses and putting them down like letgoes all over town. Instead, we will allow folks to construct the echo unit in their backyard and keep it when the ten-year deed restriction is over. That way those elderly in-laws are not evicted in their seventies and homeless. They can live there the rest of their life, you know, as long as you still want them to be in your backyard. Um, the other thing is we're creating uh, a housing stock that doesn't really exist in town. You know, these tiny accessory units. It's something we talked about at the board level. Um, there's a long-term investment value to the property owner because after the ten-year deed restriction is up. If they hated their in-laws, they could evict them and then run at a market rate. So there's a long-term value to the property owner to also participate in the program. Uh, and lastly, my favorite part of this program, it's, it's the, the unicorn of affordable housing mechanisms. It's the only one where you as the primary homeowner get to select your tenant. You do not have to affirmatively market. Every other mechanism in the world of affordable housing, you have to affirmatively market to the entire region. So that's why you could place your elderly in-laws or whoever it is. Uh, they still have to be income qualified. So if you have filthy rich elderly in-laws, they cannot live in your backyard. Um, this mechanism uh, would be allowed in the R one zone. The lot would need to meet all the lot of minimum lot size requirements, setbacks and whatnot. We did put a cap on the unit size. Because we want to make sure that it is an accessory unit, not that, we don't want to start creating two principal homes on a lot. So we put in some checks and balances to control and regulate that. And also to incentivize the participation in the program, we've set aside five thousand dollars per unit in the spending plan. We think that we'll be able to attract four units through this program, or I'm hoping. So with those three mechanisms, we would meet our rehab obligation. Our prior round obligation, we still have not satisfied that two-unit obligation. In your third round settlement agreement, we had identified the River Mills site as providing one credit and one bonus to that obligation. As we all know, that site stalled and hopefully it will come back to life soon. That project overall. Provided four affordable housing units and there is a payment lieu um, monetary obligation because they generate a fractional obligation. Um, of a half unit. And so. Developers have a choice. They can either round up and they could have given us five units or instead maybe pay the fractional. Obligation, which they elected the, the prior owners elected to do. Um, so. One unit and one bonus credit go to the prior round from River Mills. The remaining River Mills credits go to the third round. Then we have a, a couple of other mechanisms and all of these were in more third round settlement agreement. So none of these are new.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we did rezoning back in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen for the R eight B zone. That's south of ceramics off of Sixth and Seventh. There's three lots there. They are, according to publicly available mapping, partially encumbered with the flood hazard area. So they're going to have to be elevated buildings. And right now our zoning allows fourteen units to the acre. Because of, you know, D E P's. Environmental regulations are expanding outward because they're realizing that we should not locate people in hazardous volatile areas. So. My fear is that that density is not financially viable. And so what we're proposing and what's attached to the housing plan. Is an ordinance to increase the density from fourteen units to the acre to twenty units to the acre. It's only three properties. It's not, while the numbers sound like they're a, a jump, it's really not that big of a difference, but I think it's enough to help move the needle. So those sites are zoned today. We'll make that minor adjustment. Those sites were expected to generate four affordable housing units. Then we have next door us, the church daycare site. That was already zoned as well for the third round plan. Or um, a total of ten units. The ordinance that's in place requires both the house and the church to be retained and converted. And I think that makes it a little difficult because now you're working, you know, within a really rigid box. So in discussing with the affordable housing subcommittee. We agreed that the house is not architecturally significant. And so that could be demolished and rebuilt, but the church will be retained. In addition, we would increase the yield from ten to fourteen units to try to incentivize that to occur. So that also, that changes in the ordinance that we have in the packet. That site was earmarked for two of affordable housing credits. Then the third and last site is the R three zone expansion. And that's in the southern end of town, south of the garden apartment complex. The whole, the single family homes south of that were rezoned to be in the same zone as the garden apartment complex. That zone allows today sixteen units to the acre. This housing plan poses one change. Um, the minimum lot size is larger than any one of those single family home lots. And I understand what Vetch McEnzie, your prior. She was trying to encourage a developer to assemble lots. So they have some standards. Unfortunately, we've had now seven years and no one has taken us up on that offer. So we're reducing the minimum lot size to be closer to the average of what those lots are today, hoping. Because let's face it, if we can't get two side by side neighbors to agree, we're going to be handcuffed. So we're hoping that this change might. Be the incentive someone needs to consider um, redeveloping their property. This area was earmarked for eight credits. There were two additional sites that were in the third round settlement right now. That unfortunately, outside of Frenchtown's control, no longer present a realistic opportunity to create affordable housing. The first is Chilcoteau over on Kingwood Avenue. That site has um, two issues. If you look at the map in the housing plan. You will see that every square inch of that site has an environmental constraint on it.
Hmm.
Part of that site is in the floodway, which you cannot build in. The overwhelming majority of the site, except for the um, edge of the parking lot along Kingwood Avenue, is in the flood hazard area. And then the rest of the site has other constraints, um, three hundred foot buffer of the stream, et cetera, et cetera. So we have environmental constraint issue. Um, and then the second issue we have is that we have an email from the property owner saying that he is no longer inclined to pursue. The inclusionary development. Um, back in two thousand nine, he received preliminary approval for inclusionary development. That approval has expired. Um, but. With the, the combination of the environmental constraints that exist on the site, a property owner who is telling us he's not interested in pursuing that project. Under the affordable housing rules, this site, I can't with a straight face go to the county level housing judge and say, sure. We're going to get housing units out of that. It no longer presents a realistic opportunity. So we need to remove that from the plan. Now you're in a unique situation because we're seeking a vacant land adjustment for the fourth round. You did not seek a vacant land adjustment for the third round because at that point in time, we thought we had sufficient sites and we could satisfy the whole obligation. Fast forward, we had changed circumstances. So what this housing plan does is say to the program who will be evaluating our document. Is because we're a land constrained town, because of these chain circumstances beyond Frenchtown's control. This site is not going to produce credits and therefore the two units that we thought were going to be generated by this site are not happening. And what we are requesting is that the fifty-two unit third round obligation be adjusted. It's like almost going back in time vacant land adjustment. So we adjusted from fifty-two to a realistic development ten, potential of fifty. We have a very similar issue at block forty-eight plus seven. This is sixty-nine Kingwood Avenue. The planning board actually got an application a couple of months ago for this site. And what we learned when they filed their documents is there is an unmapped tributary immediately to the east of that property. That tributary feeds into a C one waterway. So the tributary then has a three hundred foot bumper which crosses the entire property. D E P will not allow any disturbance in the inner one fifty, uh, hundred fifty feet. In the outer one hundred and fifty feet, the only thing that D E P will allow is either a single family home or a two-family home. The borough rezones for town halls. So in the, the regulations, the board cannot force someone who's building either a single family home or a two-family home to make. One of those or both of those afford. Cannot do. It's called cost generative. It's illegal. So that site, because of that unmapped stream that no one knew about, and I will tell you, it's, it's the only reason it's on my map is because we actually brought in the data from the site plans. To show where the stream is and to show the buffer encompassing of that site. So that site was supposed to generate three credits. So that too needs to be deducted. So now instead of fifty-two goes down to fifty, fifty goes down to forty-seven. So the third round obligation is a R D P of forty-seven and the five units become unmet need. For the unmet need, both for the fourth round unmet need and for the third round unmet need, we are going to use Frenchtown Village Center Plan. It exists today. We did not utilize it in the third round settlement agreement. The redevelopment plan permits when someone reboats or redevelops multifamily housing and it has an affordable housing set aside. The ordinance that's attached to the report is recommending that we change the set aside, bring down fifteen percent of its rental or twenty percent of its sale. And the reason towns differentiated between the ten years was previously you would receive a rental bonus for rental units, a one-for-one bonus. So there was an incentive to make rentals attractive to developers because the benefit was the borough. So we get this extra bonus, bonus credit for everyone. That bonus credit has been eliminated. So now there's no incentive to do rental over sale. So it was my recommendation to the subcommittee to make it a twenty percent set aside, blind to tenure because that bonus doesn't exist. So the. Page sixty, no, yes, sixty of the report summarizes everything, both existing and proposed. So the housing plan that you're looking at tonight, nothing is. I shouldn't say that. For the prior round, the third round and the fourth round, nothing is new. Every one of these zones exists. All we're doing is tweaking or amending them to try to incentivize the development of these properties. All we're doing is tweaking or amending them to try to incentivize the development of these properties. The only thing that's new are the rehab programs, which is just because we have a new obligation and we need to address it. So that's my summary of the document, I'm happy to take any questions that the governing body might have or comments.
Sterling, could you speak to the echo units, I know we talked at the planning board level, just in terms of. Uh, capacity limitations within them, putting those in place?
Yes, uh, there with me, I have the ordinance sitting right now, um, so. The. Orders that we've put together. Has the size of the unit.
They can also only be constructed if you have available. Land where it can accommodate it currently.
So you have to, so our long zone, oh, you have to meet the minimum lot size. The echo unit has to meet all the accessory structure setbacks. We did slightly amend coverage. Because I didn't think it would be fair to expect someone to provide by the same coverage. That their existing single family home and garage and you know whatnot has to fit on, so we gave them just a little bit more coverage to build the accessory unit. Um, the height of the echo unit is capped at one story and eighteen feet, so this is not going to expire once with two stories setting long. The floor area is capped at five hundred square feet. The ordinance, um. Limits it to occupants. And the ordinance also caps the number of echo units at five, now you remember, I said we only have funding for four. So essentially this is first come, first served, so. What we discussed is if this program is wildly successful. And we get five folks who show up and the fifth one will not get any money from us, but you know, they might say, look, I wanna move in my disabled brother. And you know, have a safe place for him, I don't, I don't need the money. So if a sixth person comes to us and says, gee golly, I'd really like to do this, I don't need your money either. We can always go back and amend the ordinance, we are not going to be penalized, in fact, we'll be praised. For building more of these echo units. So. I could see a scenario where the echo unit program is actually more successful than the rehab program. What I've found over the past eight years in implementing rehab programs is people will usually apply. Then once they read all the fine print on the rehab program, it's the lien and the mortgage that scare folks. And that's usually, especially if it's an elderly couple. Their children are always concerned about, well, what happens if they pass away during the time here, you know, it's just, it's it's extra logistical hoops. And so for that reason. Rehab programs, despite some towns' best efforts. People will be interested, but once they hear about the the lien or the mortgage, they walk away. So the, I think the echo, I'm really excited to see what happens with the echo.
But if you're an heir to an estate. And your relative passes that took advantage of a program like that. At the time, don't you just extinguish the the payoff, whatever the note was, and then restricts the property?
So in the rules, um. I think it's called class A beneficiary, don't ask me what it's defined as, um, you can actually move into the house. And not be income qualified and the the mortgage or the lien were told for the ten years. Conversely, if the folks who inherited the homes said, we don't need another house, we don't wanna live here, we're gonna sell it, they would have to pay back. The money. In full. Because. If the if the unit is not. In the program for the full ten year period, let's say it's even nine years and nine months, we don't get the credit. And so, yes, and so. That's why you wanna recapture if someone does not go to full ten, because we have to start back over at the beginning.
I know with the county monies, that's been, well, since a lot of the properties in her have appreciated greatly since covid. What I'm seeing with the county lending program is most of the heirs to these homes just pay off the note and then sell it on the market for. But it keeps the program flush with cash, which is good.
Right, because if if you don't have that provision in there. We will use our trust fund and not have any credits.
Right, which is bad, yeah. I I have a question about the echo housing, um, one, are the utilities required? Like access to. The utilities for that second dwelling? Have.
Yes, so they're, um.
So I guess, my question is, do they have to exist in the area of where that building building is located?
You could do an echo unit on a septic, but their septic is gonna have to pass health department inspection. So, um, we didn't do echo units, but in Tewksbury we did accessory units, same thing, except. You have to affirmably market to everyone and it's not restricted, it's disabled, but Tewksbury is the land of septics and wells. And that program has been happening for years, so if they are not connected to public water and sewer, their well would have to pass muster. And so we're just.
So, but if you are connected to sanitary sewer and water and you're building this in your backyard, you are going to just. Connect, you you're extending the connection. Um, and then secondly. What about the implications on impervious surface?
So I did increase um, impervious surface, so right now in that zone, it's fifteen percent. And I increased it to seventeen percent, I ran a few numbers and with the five hundred square feet. I thought that was a good, give them a little buffer in case they wanted to do a walkway or whatnot. I did not mention, but we are not requiring any additional parking. Because if if. You know, if they're senior or disabled and they need the, remember, they need the income requirements. They may not be able to afford a car. And so what we were at the subcommittee level hesitant about is if we did require parking, all we're doing is increasing the cost. Of building the unit. It doesn't preclude someone from adding a parking space, we're just not mandating the parking space.
If after the ten years, when it's freed up from the um, restriction. Is there a way that you can? Re- require parking at that point?
Well, that's a confusion, um. I think. I think that's something we could look at because the other thing we may want to do, you know, look now, looking in long term. We also may want a deed restriction recorded memorializing the two occupants. Beyond. The term of the ten year deed restriction, because I would hate to see, even though it's five hundred square feet, folks are creative. Um, and there's this thing called bump beds. And so I wouldn't wanna see it spiral and all of a sudden we got six people living in a five hundred square foot unit. Where we anticipated only two folks residing. So I I do think. You know. So. Fast forward, we we submit the housing plan. And we have actually technically submitted it to the program, the program, there's a challenge period, so we're gonna wait. And order a ref until the end of August and hope no one challenges our plan. And then at that point, the program will review our plan. We actually won't be forced to adopt any of the implementing ordinances until next March. So we'll only adopt the ordinances once we get our plan signed off on. But after we do that, then we will actually have to prepare an operating manual with our administrative agent and I think those are perfect things that we should discuss. When we, you know, when the rubber really hits the road. About making sure there's not unintended consequences.
Additional questions from the council?
I have one, just what if you move in your elderly parents and they. Move before or die before the ten years, do you, does it have to be your own relative that?
No, so, um, I. That was just an example, but it it could, it doesn't have to be a relative, it can be anyone, I mean, you could also, you know, list it on. The. Local borough website and try to solicit someone, they just have to be income qualified.
Okay, gotcha.
That's one question, darling, you mentioned the payment. In lieu for the half unit, is that going to the Affordable Housing Fund?
Yes.
Okay.
And so that is in the spending plan, the spending plan, um. Has. The current balance of the trust fund and then I have to project forward ten years, so that payment, I actually put it very far out of the ten years because I. Wanted to give us a lot of wiggle room to not be relying upon that right away. Um, we also have to project how much development will occur in Frenchtown. So for example, the planning boards approved a few single family homes, they will generate development fees that will go into the trust fund. And so anytime someone builds a brand new home or if there were a brand new non-residential development. Um, we then get trust fund money and so that's what we'll be using to pay for the rehab program and the echo program.
And again, just to circle back on echo, so the four units will be borough owned. No, nothing is for our own.
You are not a landlord.
But we are funding the building of the four units?
Where, where not, I don't know that eight thousand dollars is going fully funded, but it's certainly going to help them. To construct that unit.
You you subsidize the construction of it to get.
On someone else's property. And but it, to get the credit, but then it also goes through the planning board process to make sure that it's built in compliance with.
No, only only go to the planning board if you are seeking a variance. If you build within the confines of what's allocated program and the building inspector reviews it.
If they use this adjustment on setback, for example, then they would come before planning.
Yeah.
Otherwise, no.
There is some sort of safety oversight to where someone's building a dwelling that. We need to make sure is up to code and safe.
The construction office.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, zoning officer, construction department, inspections, C O, all that still applies.
And that applies even after the ten years and if they wanna. If they want to rent it at market value after, not unless we have that on the books, right?
C C Os.
We don't.
Okay.
Do we?
No, no, once it's, once it's built.
I think, but I think to the point, I think we have to start looking at. If there are units that are going to convert over and more rental space, certainly in knowing what we have and some of the challenges. Um, already, I think we have to look at.
I think that's gonna be.
That program.
Property maintenance code.
Right.
We haven't been able to get through in the past, but I think that's becoming a challenge not having a more robust property maintenance code. Uh, just to put in perspective, we're in region three, which is the most affluent of the income qualifications, so the most updated. Sheet, since we keep talking, you know, two people in an echo unit, a median income is one hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Moderate is ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Low is considered sixty-one thousand four hundred and the very low is thirty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, so I think sometimes there's. A misconception that the affordable housing equals the federal section eight program and they're they're very different. So just want to point that in the record there. Are there additional questions from the governing body? Uh, darling, thank you so much for all your work on this, I'd like to offer an opportunity for the public if they have any questions or comments at this time. Just please state your name for the record. Any public comments, questions about the affordable housing stuff?
Um, I was curious about Harrison Square. Could, so they have seventeen affordable units. Um, and I think, I think the public does believe it's section eight, I think a lot of people really true believe in that. Um, could they up their affordable housing, let's say to twenty units instead of seventeen just to. Do you know what I mean, like, or they said it seventeen and that's it?
So that that's a good question, they received a site plan for, oh, gosh, I don't know how many years ago, how many? Five-ish, um, and so their their zoning was set in place at that time. For the set aside that they provided us. Um, they provided the exact. Required set aside. So it, most developers that are of the goodness of their heart will not give you more affordable housing units. Because typically they are losing, they're they're definitely losing money on the variable income units, those rents usually for around three hundred dollars. Um, so in some cases, I do have some towns where they will go to. Uh, like the older garden apartment. Developer or or owners. Where they know the rents, the market rate rents are already lower and see if they can make a deal. To put a deed restriction on their units. Um, that's very difficult because you're asking someone to, with those units, the new requirements are, it's a forty year deed restriction. So you're asking developers to take a forty year cut in their profit. Um, most of them tell you no, so, um. So it is highly unlikely that we would get them to give us any more credits because technically they've already met their quota.
Yeah.
Actually, sorry, our man's over, I should say one more question about the River Mills development. So considering that, I believe more than half of the developers already been built. Is that accurate, was it less than half?
It's a little less than half.
Less than half. Uh, my curious, curiosity about was for a developer, the financial upside of the market rate usually subsidizes the affordable housing and. I don't know what percentage it is, it's probably at least, you know, thirty percent I would imagine of the development has been built. Uh, does the plan take into account that that's already been realized by a previous developer and that? I don't know if any funds were captured for the affordable housing component there, but it's a bigger challenge for a new developer to go in. And say now you have your market rate is now chopped off, considered like you still have to build the supportive housing component.
So that site is certainly, uh, has some challenges and. The the fact that there's a sort of disproportionate amount of market rate left compared to affordable. Is ultimately going to be reflected in the sales price of that property, that property is just less valuable.
Right.
Because the prior develop, I mean, we're probably what, two, three developers removed now, where they realize the profit.
Right.
And now we've got this stranded asset and so. The current owner may think that they're sitting on a gold mine, but they're not. And so ultimately it's just going to sell at a reduced. Value because of the affordable housing obligations. Um, and I know that the Borough Council has worked with. Every developer that has come in over time and we've done modified agreements and. Um, unfortunately, if. We are really unable to give anyone a pass because that site is essential to checking these various boxes for the rounds. So certainly, I certainly recognize that this is. A a challenged site, but I think also the property owner has to recognize that they're not sitting on some multi-million dollar development.
Additional questions and comments? Okay, uh, with that, thank you very much, darling, I think in the interest of, uh, time for you and thank you to everyone that worked on the, um. Putting this plan together as well. I feel we'll vote on the resolutions so that you can, uh. Get on to your next task that evening. Under resolutions, there's two that we need to act upon on section eight on the agenda, the first is resolution twenty twenty-five dash ninety-one. Endorsing a housing element and fair share plan for round four. Is there a motion for adoption of that resolution?
So, second.
Thank you, uh, council president, let me take a second. Um, any questions or comments on it? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Berner, yes, councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Council president, Nixey.
Yes.
Councilmember Uptake.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner.
Yes.
And then the next resolution, twenty twenty-five dash ninety-two, intent to bond in the event that there is a shortfall in funding to effectuate certain affordable housing mechanisms. In the housing element and fair share plan. Is there a motion for adoption of that?
Some of them.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Before you call for a vote on that, perhaps Ms. Cream and also.
Sure.
Yeah.
So under these rules, if there are certain programs in your housing plan. And the one that is triggering this is the rehab program. You are required to view the borough or required to be the financial backstop. So if for some reason our trust fund was not sufficient to fund those three rehabs. Then the governing bodies theoretically require to bond. It was very purposeful and there's a reason why there's only three. Because you have sufficient money in the trust fund to do those three. Uh, there are some towns, um, another program that requires this is a hundred percent affordable, so if we had partnered with like a group home provider. Or a larger developer who's building now an eighty unit development, which every town is doing that. And their exposure is five million dollars. So. In that instance, they are the financial backstop if that developer cannot get the full five billion. So luckily, we're only talking about thirty thousand and you have all of it in your trust fund, so, uh, even though we have the money in the trust fund, we're forced. To adopt this ordinance, it's silly, but it's just the way that the rules are written.
Any additional questions or comments on that? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Berner?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Nitek?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move into our first, um. Public comment portion of our meeting this evening. If you'd like to address the governing body, please just state your name for the record. There's also a second public comment portion at the end of the meeting. Would anyone like to address the council this evening?
All right.
Okay.
Our son, we're okay from forty-seven, can we, I can test some facts. So a follow-up to the town hall meeting, we just had nothing in, uh, in April. About, uh, lowering speed limits on, uh, county roads as they've traversed the municipality. If we were ready to develop it. Uh, he said, if I may, just to keep a bit of context about it, um. That strategy right now is thirty-five miles per hour, but if I actually would be twenty-five miles per hour, maybe if it was built in. It would be automatically twenty-five miles per hour due to the, uh, density of housing in that area, sidewalks, pedestrian and bicycle traffic, et cetera. Um, and that's under the terms of state law. Um. And so there's been, you know, increase in residents. Over the years about lowering the speed limit again there. And in twenty twenty-two, a speed study was conducted. And, uh, that used the eighty-fifth percentile rule, which essentially says. Whatever, uh, speed, eighty-five percent of the traffic is traveling at, uh, it means it's a term primarily dictated with the speed on that road is. Um, and that's, uh, at the time that this, that was conducted, that was like the common law under the. Twenty twenty, well, I'm misusing common law. That was the standard under the previous M U T C D, the manual of uniform traffic control devices. In twenty twenty-three, they updated that standard because they're realizing that this standard that was developed for highways with higher speed were over those. Um, is not the, the highest factor that should be taken into consideration for, uh. Residential streets and, uh. In that, they said there's no existing or new requirement that speed limit must be set eighty-four percent total. Um, and it needs to take into account the entire context of the neighborhood and the usage. Um, other things to note about. The value in reducing speed in that section, which is like traffic by a lot of kids across from the sidewalk, doesn't have a sidewalk, the sidewalk does. Uh, elderly residents, et cetera. Uh, it's the safety factor, which is that you're twice as likely to be killed at thirty-five miles per hour versus twenty-five miles per hour. Um, a quality of life factor is that, uh, reducing the, the speed limit by twenty miles per hour. Uh, will reduce the roadside in a ways by four to five decimals, which is about a third required that would be otherwise. Uh, and from the kind of externality of it, how it would affect drivers. Uh, changing the speed limit along that fourteen-foot stretch would add six seconds to travel time, which is probably imperceptible, uh, to most people. So our goal, and this is something that's been researched and discussed in conjunction with a lot of the residents that are affected in this area. Um, is to try to push the municipality and push the county to do this. And so when I brought this up at the town poll meeting, I was asked about precedents from other, uh. Uh, other towns that have had success with county roads, because this is a county road and stretches. And there's quite a long list and it grows by the year. Uh, the closest one would be in Lambertville, uh, where a portion of five eighteen was reduced to twenty-five miles per hour. And, uh, speed limits were reduced on six twelve and six seventeen, which are all county roads. Uh, hope we'll have that done on a, a stretch of, um. Kind of five eighteen and six fifty-four, Princeton on, uh, county road five eighty-three and six oh three, uh, in Montclair, uh. Several different sections of road. There's a whole list in here. Uh, and so this is usually been done in cooperation between the municipality, going to the county and saying this is what we're hearing from residents. Um, and it's like to revisit this option to see if this is something that's feasible. Uh, and a lot of times they're being met by the county with acceptance and a realization that this is. The evolution of the global standard for traffic safety, which is, uh, the safe streets principle. Um. So what we're specifically asking the council to do is authorize the borough engineer, so that section of Kingwood Avenue. Uh, meets the statutory criteria. Uh, an adoptment order, it's a rest in part in county that goes twenty-five miles per hour on that stretch of street. And then forward this to the county commissioners, um. To get that to like actually be functional in the retail requires, uh, you know. Updated infrastructure. There's a speed sign heading into town, but I think we see the worst speeding actually heading out of town. And that's on the side of the street that doesn't have a sidewalk. You get the situation where people cross the bridge and you don't know. Uh, and that's where all the kids are coming down from like the hill, uh, facing streets, usually they're across the road. Um, and that road in particular is quite wide. I'm sure the residents of that side of the street would love to have a sidewalk. And the sidewalk narrowing of the road is just a natural traffic calming device. Um, because we don't want to rely with something on enforcement of the goodwill of, you know, motorists, uh, to have this happen. People respond to the built environment, um, in the most like fundamental way we recommend. Uh, so. That's it. We have the signature of, uh, twenty-nine different residents on the back, uh, which represented twenty-four different households along that stretch. There's a couple adjacent areas, uh, who were in support of that. So thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Um, additional public comments?
Hi, I'm, uh, Linda Young. And I did all what you, and I'm not the best speaker, so bear with me. And, um, I want to thank you. I was late at the last meeting a month ago and it was very kind of you. To let me, um, go ahead and speak after you are already adjourned. But when I got home, I'm going, why do we have to wait for stop signs? Um, until that sidewalk. By the, uh, wild fern is being implemented. And, um. Do you know, I live in the Frenchtown, um, um, apartments. The only way you can cross twenty-nine is to, um. There's no, there's no place. I mean, you, you know, you can't go along the cemetery. You can't put a sidewalk there. I mean, Ryan, our manager, has five children. There are many children there. There are many disabled. And, um. Uh, people that, um. I was trying to roll down, disabled and are challenged. And then there's some old ladies like me. Uh. That cross over with my dog. And I'm just thinking, how, do you know how long the Frenchtown Commons building has, uh, when it was built? Do any of you know what year? Exactly.
Yeah.
Do you know?
I lived here.
Nineteen seventy-nine. I was twenty-nine years old. I'm seventy-five now, a few years ago. And, and when was the wild fern opened?
Recently.
October twenty-sixth. Two thousand and twenty-four, not even a year, but you are so quick to put a sidewalk there. For the drunks, you're worried about their safety. And here, you know, all of us.
There's no sidewalk.
No, but you are implementing a sidewalk.
I think we gotta just.
Yeah.
Set the record. So what is gonna happen underneath the transportation alternatives program that the borough perceived a grand for? That we're actively trying to implement. Is greater sidewalk connectivity as well as lighting. So part of that plan. Included before any brewery existed to extend the sidewalks in the Frenchtown Borough. Down to the Commons in front of what was the Aries Building, then became Two Buttons and then it was. A restaurant and now it's a brewery, but there was a sidewalk extension down there. As well as lighting that would be around the borough, the downtown, extending down to that property to the Commons. As well as down Second Street.
But why, okay, for example, last week, um, one of my friends who's in a wheelchair at Frenchtown Commons. Was crossing, right across there and with another woman. And the other woman went out into the street three times and nobody stopped. And I'm, I'm very grateful that you're putting in a third lease officer. But you're not going to have a police officer planted down. What you need is stop signs with lights. And they're all over New Jersey and I just don't understand why we have to wait. We can't get stop signs. There. It just doesn't make sense. I just wanna, um, this is kind of ironic. Um, my husband and I, um, we couldn't sell our house in Summit, New Jersey, so we went for a brownstone. In, um, Jersey City in two thousand and thirteen. And that's when the new mayor, Stephen Philip, he, that was his first, um, he just became mayor. And anyhow, we were in a group to get stop signs. And Jersey City is the second. Um, largest city in New Jersey. Newark is number one. So we were in a group, we asked because of this park, we needed stop signs. Well, Stephen Philip. In a few days, those stop signs went up. Seven P M. That night that they went up, I emailed him. Thank you for, Stephen, putting signs up. Uh, one of them. Is, uh, blocked by another sign. And this is no lie. The next morning, six A M., my husband and I heard drilling. And they were putting the stop sign, but, um, I guess I won't be able to. I, I mean, I don't know why we have to wait. Why we can't get just stop signs now, you know, it's, I mean, why do we have?
Do you want a crossing, a crossing sign?
No, that.
Do you want a stop sign? Because it's a state highway there and we can't just, the borough can't put.
Done.
No.
Yeah. No.
We don't have jurisdiction.
Yeah.
You could contact the state legislatures and L D fifteen and ask them.
You have to wait until, um, Stephen Philip becomes governor.
Well, Stephen Philip has bankrupted our local schools with his million-dollar houses, they have pilots. That's a whole nother topic. While our education aid gets cut here, they built two million-dollar houses in Jersey City and given pilots, but.
Not, there, there, you could if you really wanted to. You really wanted to work on.
Okay. Thank you very much. Additional public comments? Uh, right there, please. I think. Amy, your next.
Bone, I just wanted to make a very quick comment, um. In response to what Armin had commented about. In terms of the speed, one of the things that I noted as a resident on Kingwood is. Police officers are speeding in and out. On that road without.
Police officers as in state police?
Or Frenchman.
I mean, no, okay, state, I don't know. I can look out the window to see which ones they are other than the, I know their police. They're speeding in and out without lights on, which makes me wonder. Um, it's a safety issue for all of the reasons that were pointed out with kids and bicycles and pedestrians, et cetera. When there's not an emergency, which maybe there is. But put the lights on if there's emergencies, whether people can be super aware that like. Back off. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you. I'll ask our public safety director about it. I do. There's some kind of rule where they don't want them running with. Lights and sirens on because it creates people to panic on the roadways too. So there's a whole thing with that.
But we can certainly share the complaint about troopers. Speeding in and out. If it, it, it's troopers though, right? Or you're unsure because you haven't seen the vehicles.
They're trying to catch speeders leaving town. So that's.
In, like both leading.
So they're doing traffic enforcement.
No, they don't know.
I, I would imagine.
It's probably to point out a respect for the neighborhood and, but it, the speeds. Were actually doing the opposite, creating the opposite effect, which is. Fifty miles an hour, sixty miles an hour, trying to catch somebody. Um, and without lights on at the expense then of, or in the, creating danger that they were trying to avoid by turning the lights on.
Okay.
Additional public comments?
Hi, um, Lauren Shepherd, um, let me mention Harrison. So I want to thank you. And by my heart, we're protecting Frenchtown wildlife and putting up the no trapping sign, um, at the community garden. Um, I know that you had spoke at the last meeting about having some updates about. I've heard, um, some good news that were occurring. So I was wondering.
I, I, council president has a few updates. I will say we do have on the agenda tonight, while we put the signs up. It was rightfully brought to our attention. There's nothing on the books to actually enforce it. So we're, we're taking action. So I don't matter.
And the good news is it's in all public spaces.
Oh, it is.
So it is literally just beyond the community garden to close that loophole that we're missing enforcement.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Enforcement was the issue that I have with the garden. I understand that someone has been moved in as, um, manager of the garden.
That's, that's what I want to talk about. We, um, eh, we are working, we, we worked with John Meisen, who, you know. Was the point of contact there. Um, John is getting up there. He wants to pass some of the duties along to the younger. Um, gardeners. So, um, we've offered to help take some of the administrative function. Away from the volunteers at the garden. And have it run through and Sam, I will be reaching out to you to schedule a meeting with John. And you and Kelly.
Sure.
You tell me.
Yeah.
Um, of how we transition that process because that would to address the concerns that you had with the queue. Um, the waiting lists not being respected and, um, ensuring that Frenchtown residents. Are offered the available plots that, um. Uh, that Frenchtown residents are prioritized for that. We also are, eh, um. There were, was a situation with composting and brats, um, so. We, as a borough, are gonna buy one of the composters that sealed, that should curtail the rodent issue. And the garden is buying to others. So we're trying to partner with them to help with some of the issues with.
Right. I understand that they're also gonna have, um, meetings about how to use the compost, which I think is great. I mean, I've just heard positive things. My only concern is what you just spoke about and I'm glad about enforcement in the garden. If I understand the person who. Is the only person I think who stood up to be manager, um, that person is very pro trapping. Um, and has mentioned it over and over and over again. It was pretty upset when the no trapping sign went up. And my concern was that there's still a trap. There's one trap sitting there and not open, but it's still there. And if the manager of the garden is pro trap trapping, I'm just concerned about how that message. Goes out to everybody. Also, there has been no mention in any emails to the gardeners about. The no trapping sign, which is kind of a big thing. Like you would think they would say, hey, this is what we're gonna do. This, we're not trapping, we're not having traps here, but. No mention of it, which is kind of interesting. You know, I don't understand why the rest of the gardeners are not, you know, informed on what's going on. But they seem to know what happens.
Right. Clearly, yeah.
You know, there's nothing mentioned from the garden through emails about, about that. Hey, let's talk about it, you know. Um, and just the enforcement. That's, that's what I'm concerned about. I'm just afraid if you have a manager who's very pro trapping. Um. You know, I, I, I'm concerned that they will trap just because.
Well, yeah, I mean, this, this will have some teeth now.
Right.
If they are trapping. Yep.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Much. I mean, this is not gonna be my last meeting. There's some interesting things, but I really appreciate everything. Thank you.
Additional comments, please, Amy.
Thank you so much for your involvement in all of that. I would like to report on the fact that they had actually had a composting meeting already. They. Put it in action. They taught all the people that are composting how to use it.
That's great.
In terms of management, just like John Meisen, the woman who he is actually recommending to become manager. She wasn't seeking it out herself. He recommended it. Um. In that same regard, he, there was a. I feel like it was from inception that they had an agreement that people that were members of the garden would sign. Saying they wanted to be humane with animals and they didn't want to kill animals that came into the garden, that they would trap them and bring home them. I understand there was a decision, but this wasn't gonna be happening any longer and it's been respected. Um, in terms of any communication, it's sort of a non-issue in my opinion. It, no trapping happened last year. I think it was like maybe a year and a half ago, then maybe there was trapping for some type of animal. That's not an issue whatsoever. There is an issue, which I think is more of a borough issue. There seems to be a very large rat problem and I don't think it's contained to the community garden. Like, oh, yeah. It is much more expansive than that. We just, of course, a health issue. And a great concern, I think, for probably all residents. So I just wanted to comment that I think that things are abided by and understood and. When you have a people coming into the garden, signing off on, okay, this is how we're going to approach things. Like everybody's in agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So in terms of a switch or a change. Um, I think that if there was a need to trap or there was like a rebellion against trapping, I think that it probably would have been communicated in some way. I, I personally, as a garden member, I don't feel like that's an issue. I think John's been doing a tremendous job communicating to the garden. What we're doing, how we're doing it, what we're doing it. And he's been just a tremendous community member in terms of. Involvement, as has the woman who was. involvement, as has the woman who was um who's who he is recommending. She's been super active, planning over the garden, promoting different activities for French Town. So I have a lot of confidence, as do more than half the garden members have signed documents saying that they're supportive of. I would love to hear more about the the approach to the rat problem.
The rat problem, yeah. It does appear to be a growing, I I just don't know enough about it, but I think we're gonna seek out outside experts to see what they think. Some people think it's the bridge.
Yeah, that's.
I don't know.
That's what I think. And I was gonna say through through the mayor, I I was going to call a colleague um from Lambertville to find out if they had similar. Because I, you know, we've noticed it in the numbered streets for sure. Um, so like they're displaced. I think they're, yeah.
Batteries.
Their battery, yeah.
Vibrations.
I thought it was the same thing happening.
I never had issues and I'm, you know, twenty four bridge street, I'm real close to the bridge and now.
Yeah.
Now have.
I think I think some of that is from the construction at the bridge, honestly.
We should, yeah.
Yeah, stay tuned. I think we'll have something next meeting.
I think also there was a drought, environmental issues that occurred with that. And I think it's great that the garden has these closed composts and everybody's.
Yeah.
He said, that's fantastic. And I also think everybody should do that, you know, whoever has composts should come close conference.
And bird seed and everything else that travels. You have to keep it.
Any additional public comments?
One other thing I would love to add to that is that for for quite some time, there was dumping of weeds and other commercial things, not food related, outside of it. And there is an understanding that there are rats. And that's through it. It's really too large of an area for the garden members to try to move themselves. If there's any possibility for borough support to actually relocate that with the dumpster, just move it in some way. I think that in in that area, you would be you have a very active way of of dealing with the rats in that particular area because you can see where there are little holes going into it and where there are holes going into the garden, et cetera.
Okay.
Maybe we talked to D P W about, yeah, assisting.
Any additional comments in fact, please?
All right, I just wanna.
And just your name.
Uh, just to reflect on something John maybe said, he comforted them because of my neighbors, not all of them. Uh, but the speeding from law enforcement, for me, it really is primarily the state troopers.
Okay.
And uh, like, for instance, I was talking with a member of the environmental commission, standing in front of a speed sign just earlier this week. And within five minutes, two state troopers over five, without sirens on, uh, over sixty five miles per hour. We can see it right there on the sign. That's right where it drops down to where people cross the cat.
Okay.
So they're like stopping this is, you know, marginal of that one. So I have, I hadn't seen it. Then this, again, it's just like one person's statement, like uh, being an F T D problem. It's really the states and like, I know there's times where they need to get where they need to go, but um it's in a high conflict potential area. So it would be, it would be helpful to.
Yeah, we. Raise that with crystal wire.
Was that very point? When I made the statement, I did not know who was doing the speed other than the police.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's what, that's what, yeah.
All right. Any additional public comments? First public comment portion. Right, not hearing any. Um, we're gonna move on, uh, to our adopt our consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Does anyone need anything removed off of there? Is there a motion for adoption?
Some of.
Is there a second?
Some.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, approval of the meeting minutes, uh, the May seventh, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion for adoption of those minutes?
Some of.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions, comments, or edits? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Recused.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
And then approval of the May nineteenth, twenty twenty five special meeting minutes. Is there a motion for adoption?
Some of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, edits? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
abstained.
Moving on to resolutions, uh, we have adopted the first two. So the next resolution for consideration is resolution twenty twenty five plus ninety three. Authorizing a grant application to the Hunter County Law Enforcement Grant Program.
Some of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? Okay, not hearing a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to ordinances, uh, the first ordinance for consideration is ordinance number nine thirty five, amending the retail food establishment licensing fee to add a new section two dash thirty one dot eight B dot three to include an annual fee for food trucks. This is for adoption.
Some of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinances, ordinance number nine thirty six is for introductions to temporary emergency sign ordinance. And I can provide some comments on that.
Yes, I'll um, motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So by way of background, this came through the planning board at our last meeting. Uh, given the bridge uh closure, uh, and you know, one directional traffic coming also off of um the uh, Bridge A forty five between French Town and Alexandria. There's been a real struggle in some of our businesses uh for people to find them as well as to uh kind of reacclimate themselves to some of our businesses, our I G A, our local grocery stores, in pretty serious financial trouble. Um, business is way off, gallons of gas off, sold in towns way off at the sicko station. And a number of small businesses are really suffering. So this would create some flexibility to deal with some uh uh, wayfinding signage around the borough to help people, um, you know, know that we're open for business. Grocery stores open, you can go to some of the other businesses that might not be on the main drag. Um, this came recommended from the planning board. They thought it was a good thing. It's got a temporary timeout period. But it was a means to try and help some of our small businesses with that. Uh, any other questions from the gym?
No, I just think um with the I G A and also the Legion, they'll be very happy to see this moving along. They have a really nice concept for signage.
Okay, good.
Yeah, the drawing, I've seen the drawings. They're really quite nice.
All right, with that is the roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, moving on, this is also for introduction. This is ordinance number nine thirty seven. This amends chapter three titled Police Regulations of the Code of the Borough to add a new section three dash eleven titled Trapping of Animals on Municipal Property. Is there a motion for introduction of this res- ordinance?
Some of.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or comments on it? I'm hearing roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Uh, moving on to new business, our first item of business is approval of the French Town Business and Professional Association Pride Events. I think we can just use one. Uh, so the first is Pride Parade and Picnic on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty five from one to four P M. At Sunbeam Park. And then also Queer Kickball on June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five from six to eight P M. At Old French Town Field. Is there a motion for approval?
Some of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? The only thing I would say is we should alert D P W to make sure that field is okay to play on, because that gets a little rough up there. And needs some rehab. Um, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
And then item B is approval of the F B P A Bastille Day event on July thirteenth, twenty twenty five from eleven to six P M. At Sunbeam Park.
Some of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Councilman Updike. Any questions or comments on that? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Uh, the next item of business is a resolutions for new business. It's creating an open space subcommittee. And so what this is intended to do is to address uh coming up with a plan for the former Thompson Track. So that's in your packet. I took a stab at drafting this and putting this together. Um. The way, what I propose is that gives to the subcommittee uh to the end of the year to come up with a plan for public presentation in accordance with N J uh, Green Acres rules. It calls for two members of the Environmental Commission. I have on there Tom Woodruff and Kyle Johnson. They've both expressed interest in serving. Um, the Borough Council Parks Commissioner or designee, so Bill, unless he appoints somebody else. The Chairperson of the Planning Board, their designee, currently that's Randy Echol, and then two members at large that I was gonna select. Um, and my target would be people that live up in the region up there um for those spots. So that is the gist of it. Um, I know there's been a lot of uh anticipation that we were gonna do something soon on that. We had money in the budget that was adopted to pay for preparing a plan in conjunction with Darlene Green. So that is the resolution in its totality. Any questions or comments? All right, uh, is there a motion for adoption of resolution twenty twenty five dash ninety four?
Some of.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Doherty?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
And moving on to council comments, Councilwoman Warner.
Okay, Councilwoman Updike?
I have nothing this month.
Council President Lee Tag?
Um, I have something. I want to thank you for um and the team, including Bill O'Brien.
Yeah.
Um, and um, Mike from the hardware store and Steve, your brother?
No, my brother didn't make it.
Okay.
This time.
And Mike, yeah. So want to thank you, but you want to talk a little bit about?
The lights?
Yeah.
Um, the four of us were a team to replace sockets, replace bulbs, and kind of reinforce all of the lighting, the string lights in town. I'm a sort of for for cliff driver, so I got to do that far, which is fun. And I sent Mike and Eric up in the box and uh, yeah, I think it looks great. We uh, they still need a little bit more, but it's definitely better. There was multiple full strands out, so at least town is back to being lit up.
Yeah.
We have light.
Consistently, yes.
Nice. Thank you for that. Thank you to the whole team, actually. The cat, I was talking to Dan Bush, who's the D P direct, D P W Director of the County, said, tell that up, like, I could use a fork.
I'll do that whenever I can, but straight.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
I have nothing.
Okay. Council Doherty? Oh, that's good for you.
I just want to reiterate thanks to Darlene for all the work she's done.
Yes, very much so.
Yeah.
Her team, they've been to Albert as well, even because uh, I think she produced a very good plan. She presented it well at the planning board meeting last week, uh, which enabled us to adopt it. And tonight to endorse it, and that keeps us on schedule. Um, and um, that's that's important in terms of us achieving our goals.
Thank you. Council President Lee Tag?
Um, okay, I want to just report back that I am working with F E S and Modern Fossils to finalize the wave wayfinding structure in front of the school. If you haven't seen it yet, check it out because the pieces that have been um, already installed are quite impressive. And then the actual wayfinding um signage is going to follow. So uh, check that out. Um, also, thank you to French Town Police Department, Fire Department, and O E M for assisting with the hatch. Uh, there were a lot of people in town for that event and it went off pretty um, safely and effortlessly.
Very big turnout.
Very big turnout. Um, and then finally, want to lift up an event that the police department has taken the lead on, but partnered with the elementary school uh council. The Del Vow High School SAD program, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions. Go Hunterden, the Brain Injury Alliance, um, and working to create a safety blitz campaign that will take place throughout the month of June. And it is specifically on driver safety and pedestrian awareness. They have signs that can be picked up at the police department that can be put out in front of your home. Um, and uh, it's called Slow Down French Town. So it is uh another effort in um, partnerships that we've had through decades here in French Town on these projects. And want to talk to uh you, Morgan, about engaging the F B P A in the effort as well. So that's all I have today.
Thank you. Uh, I have a couple of things. One, I want to remind everyone, I'll send something out by email, too. The county's Identis Shred Event is this Saturday from eight to eleven thirty A M. At the Route twelve county complex, or until the trucks are full, sponsored by Hunter County Clerk Mary Melfi and Sheriff Fred Brown. And residents can bring up to ten banker boxes of shredding that can be disposed of for free.
Saturday.
Saturday, yep. I recommend getting there early. It's a very popular event. They do four events over the year, but it's crazy the lines for it. Um, the Parks Grant, I just want to make sure that's on the radar screen. I I cannot submit to it for it, but that will be coming due, the County Parks Grant, so I want to make sure we we get an application in.
Thank you.
Um, early voting is underway. If you're interested in early voting, it started yesterday.
Hmm.
You can vote over at the county library at Route twelve. You can vote at the North County Library, and you can vote at the South County Fairgrounds. So if you want to need to vote early before Election Day, that's an option for you.
Through Sunday, right?
Yep, and Sunday ends at six P M. Um. I attended the uh annual uh Conference of Mayor's event, which ended up being pretty productive. I spent some time with um, S J I Industries that bought Elizabeth Town Gas, and I asked them about extending gas lines in the borough to areas that did not have access to natural gas, particularly along the Route twenty nine corridor on Kingwood or Trenton Avenue. Um, I sent them, I think Sammy got it out to him, right, the addresses for the sewer plant
Mm hmm.
and for the D P W building, since we're putting in the backup generator down there. It'd be ideal to not run it on diesel and to be able to put it on natural gas. If there's enough interest, they said that they would um, look at those properties as well as how many houses are along there. And if there's enough interest, they'll do a marketing study. And if that, by using the market study, they have to show to B P U through a formula that there's enough interest to justify the investment. They can't just select an area. So I asked them to do a uh affirmative marketing study. Um, because their cost structure, where they, the reason they stopped is they have to cross the the creek, and that becomes very costly, and there's a lot of permitting with the D E P. So they're supposed to hopefully get that underway, and we're gonna try and push that to at least, because I know that whole area, the community uh, did not have access to natural gas service. So I'd like to see if we can, if there's enough interest to to expand that. Um. I also was glad they they don't, they're gonna donate as well as New Jersey American Water to River Fest this year. They want to be sponsors. So that's great and helpful. And then um, I met with an A I vendor. And I really liked what they're doing. Uh, they can enhance our borough website. Um, and really, I think it's a pretty interactive way. So it creates like a little icon on there, and as you're searching for stuff, and sometimes the website's hard to navigate. Um, it actually, you could type in a question like, when is the next, when is recycling picked up next? And through.
Kind of filtered.
And filter and brings you right there. Same thing you could ask, when did the borough, you know, for example, ban trapping of animals, and it'll take you to the ordinance. And so through machine learning, it constantly gets smarter with navigating your website and bringing you to the answers. And I think it was pretty pretty fascinating. The guy coded it for me as a desktop demo. He's like, give me an hour. And I came back and I was searching things for thirty years ago. It was amazing.
Cool.
And it's just, it makes your website and the way you do business much more intuitive and helpful to constituents. So.
User friendly.
Yeah, so it's, it's an investment, but it's not a terrible investment. They're looking just to create like they're looking to uh kind of field this and get the technology out there. I mean, a lot of private websites already have this stuff and private companies, but you know, it might cost us twenty five hundred dollars for the year, but it's almost like the equivalent of having a part-time staff member. It's amazing. So I'm gonna kind of bring that forward because I think it's worth looking into. And you can train it even further. Um. You can actually do like forms. You know, I know like former councilwoman Holly Low, when she was at the planning board, remember she complained like, it's hard to understand if I'm filling out a form right? You can actually use this with the A I machine learning where it evaluates you filling out a form online to tell you, I think you're ninety five percent accurate. And they're filling out a form, but hey, you missed this section. That section's a little vague. It's really fascinating what this stuff can do.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea because I think that, you know, it's been back to my mind that with our with our borough staff, tools like that could be helpful to them. So, in my job, we're using, um, Copilot, which is Microsoft's AI product. And we have it set up in two modes. One is strictly work or internal. Meaning it'll look at whatever we've given it access to internally. Defined stuff like you're talking about. That's kind of the example that, you know, comes to mind when you talk about using it to look at borough information. The other mode is it goes and looks out on, on the web. But we have it, um, air gapped in the sense that none of the information that we input becomes part of the model. So, cause one of the issues around AI is how did, where does? How is, why is AI what it is, or large language models are what they are? Well, they have access to lots of information. And there's a lot of controversy about, you know, do they have permission to access that information? They did it. So, um, we're very careful, companies in general are very careful about this because of intellectual property. You don't want your company to be open, to just be scraped by an AI. And then all of your IP essentially, you know, goes into their model, and then it becomes um, public in a sense. The other issue that we have is confidentiality. So if you wanna use an AI tool to help solve a client's problem. We don't want to put confidential, we want a tool that enables us to put confidential information into it. So we, we have it set up such a way that we can use it for confidential information without, you know, it being coming in part of the model. Because if you just go on ChatGPT, you know, a commercial site, anything you put in there becomes part of their model. So, um, that's one issue I think we should address.
Yeah.
In, in doing this is, you know, um, how, is there information that is confidential in such a way that we wanna make sure it doesn't become exposed like that? But broadly speaking, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
You know.
That's a very good point. They talked, one of the things we talked about was like even the forms, right? You have to put a disclaimer on it. We're not giving you legal advice.
Yeah.
You know, yes, the form says it's, you're ninety-five percent accurate.
Right.
But that's just filling in, but not content necessarily. So, you know, there are some safeguards you have to put in place, but it, just like finding of information.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely.
An ordinance. Uh, is there an ordinance in Frenchtown such and such that I'm, boom, it was right there in front of you?
Next week, I'm talking to a coworker who's, you know, one of our AI experts, because we deal with specifications a lot, right, which are voluminous and complex. And no matter how familiar you are with them, it's difficult to know where to find something. Or you're gonna look, you could spend a lot of time flipping through it. So we think we can use the agent, it's called creating an agent to, and tell the agent, look at the specifications, and like, I don't know, learn it. And then we can query the agent, say, like you were talking about where in specifications does it talk about this or the other thing? And it'll be able to find it very quickly. So it's analogous to finding ordinance or things like that, which otherwise you rely on institutional memory or
Yeah, that's what it's helpful for.
You know, like, well, I'll flip through this thing, and maybe I'll find it, but who knows?
Yeah.
Voluminous, uh, not you, so that's what I've been doing most of it so far, is just using it as an enhanced search tool essentially. And about to do a little bit for that.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty fascinating. There's a couple different providers. The two guys that run this are younger guys, I would say, not too far out of college. It's like, I could be like the next Zuckerberg. What's your stock ticker? But, you know?
Curious, are they, did they say they're using, like is it their own AI or somebody's AI?
They developed this tool.
Yeah.
They probably have some agreements with larger vendors, I guess, but they've customized it to the public sector.
Yeah.
Cause they said the public sector's way behind.
Yeah.
And they're trying to feature it as a way to make the public sector more innovative.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. It was pretty fascinating.
We, you know, Sam does a great job, and Kelly does a great job, but the more we can give them tools to leverage. Cause, you know, there's this idea that AI is gonna take your job. AI's not gonna take your job. Someone who knows how to use AI. So we need to learn how to use AI. Um, and it'll become, like, the way I talk about it with my coworkers is, uh, you know, could you do, don't use a spreadsheet now. You can't have a spreadsheet anymore.
Yeah.
Everyone would look at you like you're crazy. But believe me, there was a day when we did not have spreadsheets. But now you would, you would say, that's ridiculous. I, I have to, I need a spreadsheet to do my job. Well, AI's gonna become my friend.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
AI tools, if you will.
Yeah.
I can.
I mean, they were even talking like, you know, the conversations around speeding and stuff. You could feed it all your data.
Yeah.
It could model your police schedule. I mean, obviously, there's a lot more to that, but you have negotiations, hours of work, but you could say, these are the most prime times that, you know, they're speeding, or crimes are committed in an area on this section. And it's constantly learning through the data.
Yeah.
To micro-target how you approach things.
Yep.
It was pretty fascinating. I went to a couple of seminars on it, so. That's, uh, right. Yeah. Any?
Shouldn't keep, we shouldn't have our heads in the sand and say, oh, that's all.
Yeah, I, I mean, just the search, even starting out with a search goal was huge. Uh, any correspondence anyone want to address this evening in the pack? Okay, uh, additional?
Excuse me, Mr. Murray, did we vote on ninety-three of those grant application? I don't know.
We did. That was for the, uh, well, for the grant, we did, yeah. Uh, with that, we're at our last public comment portion of the meeting tonight. Would anyone like to address the government bias, please, just say?
Martin Howard, twenty-one, Riverbrow, just echoing and, uh, seconding, um, Councilmember Dr. D's comments on AI. I, I, I've, um, my first CIO job was in nineteen eighty-four, so in addition to being old and we redo AI. Uh, I
No spreadsheets, right?
I go before PowerPoint, before Excel, Super Calc, uh, what is one?
Yeah, that's right.
The, uh, yeah, the, um, the AI, oh, twenty-five hundred dollars is, is nice, but my favorite price point is zero. And with schools, you know, colleges, community colleges, uh, local expertise, volunteers, I belong to a group of what one recruiter referred to as excessively seasoned, uh, CIOs and cyber security experts. But we might be able to get all of this with, with no cost. Again, uh, I was, Councilmember Dr. D, the comments are right, especially, you know, when you have uh, you know, two guys in a basement, what happens six months from now, a year from now, two years from now, when those things need to be upgraded, updated? Right? Are they here? Are they, you know, what's going on? And so, uh, I think there are potential opportunities to do this with, uh, with no cost.
Thank you. Additional, uh, public comments?
Hi, I'm Worthy Taylor. Um, I just had a few things I wanted to mention. So thank you, first of all, for approving the Pride Week event and best DLA events. We're very excited to have them again this year. Um, I did meet Chris DeWar for the first time. I had a meeting with him and Sergeant Echols last Tuesday to discuss the parade, to kind of just, you know, formally introduce myself, get, you know, and kind of tell him what our annual events kind of look like, and he was, um, really open and, um, ready to tuck, to kind of take them on. He didn't see any issue with any of them, um, sort of as we've been doing them. So that was a relief. Um, and the ball field you mentioned for kickball, um, that is on their radar already, since he's also a part of DP.
Okay, yep.
And he would make sure that that gets looked into.
Yeah.
Kind of drives slow by the other day, and it is almost completely covered with grass.
Yeah.
From what I can tell, just from like the brief sort of drive by that I did, so it's, it's definitely in need of some attention, and we're kind of a couple weeks out. So if we need some extra hands or volunteers, I mean, let me know. We can get maybe some rates out there.
So in the past, I have to find out whether DVAA used to, yeah, DVAA though, used to, if we would pay for the materials. They had a machine, and they used to use it as part of their rotational softball baseball's way down.
Yeah.
Membership, but it used to be like, it was a really good deal. We paid like twelve hundred dollars, and they would redo the entire infield for us. But I have to see about that and see if anyone's still doing that, because I haven't seen anyone playing softball at that field in a long time, but they used to keep the infield really nice, and they had a special machine that would come in, it cuts out everything. And then they backfill sand, so I gotta see about that.
Um, yeah, if there's anything we can assist with on that, too, that would be wonderful. It would be nice to kind of maintain that for, just for public.
Yeah.
You know, like, it's not, if we have it, we should, um, yeah, take care of it. Um, but also, there was, oh, I wanna mention, oh, um, there's a topic that keeps coming up at the meetings, and I keep forgetting to ask, at the FDP A monthly meetings that we host, um, they're curious about what the sort of possibility or like scenario would be of the borough purchasing the property from River Mills that's on registry.
Yeah.
Um, I, and I've noticed now that it's not getting mowed and things like that.
It's been mowed, though.
Oh, it has?
Yeah.
Good. And I know that's not our
It looks amazing.
Oh, so somebody took it upon themselves to do that?
Probably the builders.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, good. I was gonna say, cause I did walk past it the other day, and I was like, what's going on there? But I know it's not the borough's responsibility to take care of that. Um, so my question is is there any scenario in which we offered some sort of, like, um, I don't know, just sort of an agreement or like a uh, where the, where the borough would own that? And then we could potentially leave it as um, just sort of like a public space, a mini park, possibly like a public bathroom. These are the ideas that have sort of been rolled around, like what we could do with that space if we were to have it versus it be, you know, developed with commercial spaces and the environments and stuff.
So I think the challenge with it is, as Darlene indicated earlier, that's part of the Affordable Housing Plan. So that
Remember who that one?
Yeah, and the way that that development was conceived years ago is that that building, Building A would have the commercial spaces, actually like two floors of commercial and then residential. Under the Fourth Amendment, I think it's now commercial first floor and then apartments on the second floor to try and make it more attractive to private development. And within those, I think it's ten total apartments, four are reserved as part of the Affordable Housing Obligation. So, that creates a real challenge, because that's still part of the plan.
Is there a deadline for them to execute that plan?
Well, I mean, they have DEP permits that are a whole separate thing, uh, for the rest of the project, um. It's just, I don't think it, I don't think it resolves itself anytime soon. Um, there have been a couple folks looking at the development, but there's, there's, uh, it's complicated in the sense of what, what the existing owner thinks it's worth. There's some liens against the, the properties. There's municipal liens now, there's unpaid taxes on a number of the lots. The Homeowners Association has their own dispute with the, on the maintenance issue, which is why the homeowners were subsidizing maintenance there on common areas, like that front lot. Developer wasn't giving them fair compensation for that. So there's a lot of challenges there. That's, I don't I mean, maybe it's all worked out, some kind of larger redevelopment plan, another amendment, but I don't, I don't think anything would resolve it so quickly there. Is even if we changed the Affordable Housing numbers, and Darlene's gonna have to go to fair share housing and probably work through that, and that, that's a whole nother dynamic to it.
I just told them I'd ask, because they kept asking, like, that is a great question, you know?
Yeah.
In the event that we're able to work something out, or maybe move those units to one of the other lots that hasn't been built yet, and kind of switch up the configuration of what has been, yeah, um, okay, so that, I mean, take, check that out, that, that was, that's the math. And then the only other thing I was curious about was the status of the Safe Roots to School Program, our, um, development, um, has
The project.
The project, thank you. Um, I know the holdup was maybe some of the residents you hadn't heard back from.
There's about five property owners that have yet to respond along the route. Um, Sam, we're still status quo, right?
Yep.
We tried door knocking, too.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, the last email I had with, uh, NV five and Panoni was, can you go right to the DOT and ask, what do you do in this situation? Is there requiring one hundred percent consent? I think we should just drawl out those property owners from the project. They'll just, when they face the liability to face, you know, fix their sidewalk, it is what it is. They missed out on a grand, but um, I think it's unfortunate it's holding up the entirety of the project. Because it's, it's all designed, it's, it's pretty much ready to roll. It's that we don't have consent from all the property owners along there, because there'll be times when they're doing work that they have to be on their right of way. Uh, in their property, potentially, they're relaying pavers and stuff. And they're just not consenting. We're just not getting any responses. Not even if they don't like it, they're just not responding. And that's multiple certified letters and door knocking now. So, and some of these are investment owned properties, which is why we're kind of having a, a growing challenge around the boroughs more. You have less residents in some of these properties than are investment owned properties, and it's really hard.
Elsewhere.
Yeah.
So they're, you know, they're not like, they don't live here.
No, they just own and rent the spaces, and they're really hard to get a hold of. Yep.
Um, and one last thought, sorry, um, the Mule Corner. I would like to rehab that, and I would take that on wholeheartedly and, and, um, sort of present a project plan to you. What's the, is that a planning board thing? Is that a borough thing?
I don't, do they own that?
I actually don't know who owns it. We'd have to figure that out. Yeah.
Yeah, cause Oh, love that. Thank you, Sam. Yeah, so I, I would really just like to, I wanna give the Mule repaid, that I already have artists lined up for that. Mike has offered to donate money to them. And I would really, cause that's like our
You might be able to get, the owners of the BlackShed at one time wanted to, uh, update the bridge entrance to make it nice and just
And may also mention that location.
So you might be able to get, and they're fantastic.
I love the place. That would look good all year.
Yeah.
My, like, sort of manicuring throughout the year, like, the bushes along the side are very nice, and they're well kept. But everything in the middle is just like, ah!
Yeah.
I would love to help you with that, Morgan. And I'm very close friends with the owners of BlackShed, so I can kind of spearhead that part of it. But I would still love to be hands-on with you with that.
Great.
Need help.
I won't keep you in the conversation for sure. Yeah, because the railroad ties need replacement, like, the whole thing just kind of needs a, a total renovation.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I will, we'll figure out, yeah, let's, our meeting, and we'll circle back. Okay, that was everything.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Any additional public comments? Okay, we do have an executive session this evening, um, so we'll exclude the public from that. And I, do we have the executive session thing in here? Do you have? Whereas Section A of the Open Public Meetings Act permits exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the borough councils have the opinion that such circumstances exist now therefore be resolved by the Borough Council, the Borough Frenchtown, the County of Hunterdon, and Jersey as follows. Public shall be excluded from discussion of the hereafter specified subject adders. The general nature of this subject matter to be discussed is as follows: potential litigation, property maintenance violation. The Borough Council will not be taking official action on the item discussed in the executive session upon completion of the executive session. The meetings and discussions shall be made available to the public as long as, or as soon as the matter is under discussion, no longer of a confidential or sensitive nature. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Is there a motion to go into executives?
It's, it's a topic that
Oh, the topic? I thought it's potential litigation, property maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Is there a second? Uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Bernhardt?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr.?
Yes.
Council President Lee Tag?
Yes.
Councilmember Updike?
Yes.
Councilmember Warner?
Yes.
Okay, it's eight fifty-one. We're going into executive session. We just gotta
Yep, of course.
Of course. Yeah.